I'd like to call the June 18th San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And will you please stand and join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debra, will you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Silberman?
Present.
Commissioner Correll?
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Vice Chair Marsters?
Present.
We're going to move, actually, the next item to discuss, actually, to talk about is changes to the order of the agenda. And I actually have one, and that is to change and ask that 5A will be heard prior to 4A so that we can install our new commissioners prior to the approval of the minutes. So I don't think we need to vote on that. I think that just takes place. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and I have one individual city council member, Karen Clapper.
Good evening. I didn't expect about a month ago to be on this side of the room. And it's with great pleasure that I welcome all of you, but especially the three new members to the Planning Commission. This is going to be quite a challenge, bringing three new people on. But the city council has a similar challenge in that there's three of us who are fairly new to the council. So we'll all share the experience of learning curves and adjusting to our new responsibilities that we have. And I know all of you are going to do really well, having been there when we're interviewed and having worked with Angela and Scott, who I think are outstanding. I would encourage all of you to be as knowledgeable as you can about what's going on in the city, including subscribing to e-notify for the other commissions, being aware of regional activities that relate to land use in any way. I think any additional information you have makes you be able to understand the things that are going on in our own city a little bit better. Take a look at the other agendas, work plans, and their agendas to see what they're going to be talking about. And I think Debra will probably touch on this later, either at this meeting or a subsequent meeting, but I just kind of wanted to let you know there are a couple of things that have come up at city council meetings that probably would be good for you to take a look at. One is the civic facilities master plan, where they took a look at all of the existing buildings that the city has and what, long-term, how those are going to be managed. That was two meetings ago. And at the last meeting, there was a community satisfaction survey that was presented, and I know that that will be covered either at this meeting or I think the next meeting. Right, Debra?
This one?
And something else that the council takes a look at at every meeting is looking at the strategic plan and the six-month objectives matrix. And right now, there's nothing of significant impact for the Planning Commission, but it's a good document just to be familiar with. And so those were just kind of some of my thoughts that I wanted to share with you as I, it's hard for me to say, you know, I'm not going to be working with all of you, except that I will, but just in a different capacity. And I welcome any of you contacting me with any questions you may have. It came up as a question when I was being interviewed for council. What will the impact be on Planning Commission to have three new people? It was a concern that the other council members had, and I told them it was something that was important to me also, and that I would be following up, either informally or formally, to make sure that the transition was as effective as possible. So any way that I can help to make that happen, I want to work with staff and with all of you to make that work out. So welcome and best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. The next item on the agenda is new business 5A installation of the new planning commissioners. And the first will be Michael Carl and Ms. Nelson. Will you please do the installation?
Okay, you raise your right hand. Aye. And then state your name.
I, Michael Correll.
solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance
solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
and that I will
oops, too long. That I will well and faithfully
and that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
upon which I am about to enter
congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Let me pin you. Pin, yes, you get a city pin, and could you please sign?
Thank you.
And next, it's with great pleasure that we have a special guest here. Former Planning Commissioner Lee Thompson will be installing David Silberman.
Thank you.
Former city councilman. You probably have several titles.
Yes, one. Oh, sir.
Yeah, he works for me. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, David Silberman.
solemnly swear that I will bear
solemnly swear that I will bear
true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and I will well and faithfully
and I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
discharge the duties about which I'm, of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Commissioner Silberman.
Yay!
And you get to sign.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. It was my honor.
It's just a love fest, isn't it?
I think you need to sign this, actually. No?
No.
No? All right.
That's okay. Always trying to be the boss.
Debra, did you want to give him a pin?
You got a pin.
Oh, you got a pin. Okay.
I wouldn't leave without giving that.
Excellent.
Without the swag.
And next
The whole reason you joined is to get pinned.
How did you know that?
And next, we will install Jesse Gutierrez, and that will be done by Ms. Nelson.
Small sentences. Will you raise your right hand? Aye.
Aye. Jesse Gutierrez.
solemnly swear that I will bear
solemnly swear that I will bear
true faith and allegiance
true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I will take this obligation freely
that I'll take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
and I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
upon which I'm about to enter.
Good. Thank you. Congratulations. Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me say welcome to all the three of you. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. And because the three new members of the commission were not present at the last meeting, I have to ask each of you whether you've read the minutes, and if you have, then you're allowed to vote on those minutes. And the first thing I want to say is that the supplemental page was not correct for the minutes. So the minutes that you are actually approving are the ones that are in the original packet here.
Okay.
Okay? The ones in the supplemental packet skipped from two different meetings. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. So Commissioner Correll?
I have read them.
You have read them. Commissioner Silberman?
I read them, and I actually watched the video as well.
Excellent. And Commissioner Gutierrez?
I read them and watched the video as well.
Okay. So now, are there any changes to the minutes? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
A second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the installation, is the reorganization of the Planning Commission. The first item is the election of a Planning Commission Chair. Do I have any nominations for?
I nominate Scott Marsters.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We move on to the election of the Planning Commission Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations for election of Planning Commission Vice Chair?
I nominate Angela Harper-Peterson. Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we come to the appointment of the Planning Commission representative to the Residential Design Review Committee. This is, for those of you that are not aware, the commissioner who is appointed to this position essentially becomes the Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee. So for the last year, I've served as both Vice Chair and the Residential Design Review Committee Chair. It doesn't have to be that way, although it is an advantage if you're going to be Chair to have spent a year as Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee. It kind of is a test. It, it's a lot of working, one-on-one, individual properties that come forward. And so that's sort of what I have to say about Residential Design Review Committee. But in the past, it's been done by individuals who have not, who were not Vice Chair, so it can be done either way. Do I have any nominations for Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee?
Has Angela done it before?
I have not been Chair of the RDRC.
Then I nominate Angela.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'm very excited.
Welcome. It's a challenge.
I am aware of that.
From there, we move on to public hearing. I have this short paragraph to read about the public hearing. The procedure for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. And the first item on the agenda is?
The first, I have been advised by the city attorney that I may have a familial conflict of interest, and therefore I'll remove myself from the meeting. Jasmine Frost will come in just to manage the computer, and then I'll be back.
Thank you. So the first item is 3376, 3384, Melundy Drive, APNs 050, 390, 050, and 060. Consideration of a request for approval of a conditional use permit and environmental review. And it has been asked that we continue this to a date uncertain, and so I'd like to ask for a motion to continue this to the date uncertain.
I move that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The same thing is true for the second one. 700 Crestview Drive, APN 049, 400010. Consideration of a request for approval of a conditional use permit and environmental review to be continued to a date uncertain. Do I have a motion?
I move that we continue this item to a date uncertain, excuse me, to a date uncertain.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can we ask Debra to go there? Yes.
Thank you, Jasmine.
And now we move on to reports, correspondence, and general information.
I have a couple of reports from the recent city council meeting, and of course, we know how council member Clapper, and as you well know. Also, that the council, as council member Clapper noted, looks at their six-month strategic plan from time to time, and they added an item for the planning staff, and which affects you, but you've already seen it, and that is a review of the Residential Design Review Committee. They're mostly interested in fees and whether those are a disincentive. So we will report back to them. We're doing a survey of the, those users of our service over the last three years, and we will be reporting back to the council and seeing if they want to give us additional direction. Also, you have on your dais the PowerPoint presentation from the citywide survey, and the video of that is about an hour, so I decided not to show it to you tonight. But you can find it at the city council meeting from June 11th. It begins at the time of 1:20 and continues through 2:32. And also, the report content is amongst the items that are in the staff report section of the city council agenda, and I think it might be elsewhere on the city's website by now as well. So that's my report about the city council.
Planning Commissioner, comments or reports?
I just wanted to say welcome to everybody, to Jesse, Michael, David. Welcome to the Planning Commission. I'm very excited to work with all three of you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Nothing? No. Okay. Thank you. I look, I also look forward to working with you. I think it, it will be nice to have some new points of view. Not that the old points of view are bad, but it's always nice to have some, some new input.
Yep.
Yes. I also have a couple of comments or questions. Debra, South Laurel Parking, have we moved any forward on thinking about that at all? I know it was a consideration when we approved the salt box restaurant, and
Right. I believe what I reported was that any individual could write a letter to the Community Development Director slash Public Works Director to ask that it be placed on an agenda before the Transportation and Circulation Commission. This commission could also ask that it be agendized here for you to take a vote as a commission.
Okay.
We are, however, regarding parking, there is a parking study for which we have issued a request for proposal, have chosen a consultant, and we're about to begin, and the council asked that we rewrite the work program such that it extended to South Laurel, and also to have kind of an interim check-in in that study where we would first do an inventory. So you may choose just to watch that process first and then make a decision about whether you want to have any further review.
Will there be, is there a Planning Commissioner on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Chair Harper-Peterson, and Chair of the RDRC, Harper-Petson.
Thank you. Thank you. From my perspective, I think at the moment, I would like to see us wait for the traffic report and see how that goes. I don't know if anybody else is.
Debra, do we have a update on the timeline as far as when the RFP process will move forward and when, when we'll be meeting?
No, but I'll ask Lisa Costa-Sanders, who's the project manager on that, to send you a update.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
One other comment I'd like to make, and that is, at times, it might be handy to have a second commissioner who fills in as Chair of the RDRC if the existing Planning Commissioner cannot make that particular RDRC meeting. Is that allowed within our ordinance, or do we?
No.
It is not allowed?
Well, it's not stated in the ordinance, and our past practice has been to ask a commissioner who has served on RDRC to take that role.
Okay.
And, yeah, so there you go.
Careful what you wish for. You stepped right into that one, didn't you?
Yeah. Yeah. I was just, I was just checking to see how that was handled, if the need arises.
Yes. It's rare, but
Because I see we've put a fair amount of work on our new Vice Chair.
Yes.
So, okay. And the last question or comment I had, I noticed that north on El Camino, north of CVS, the area from that building sort of to the city line has become paved over and fenced off, and I was just kind of curious what was going on there. And maybe you can check on that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It, it's from CVS north to the city line, as you come through the tunnel there.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on there, but I noticed it was paved and fenced off. So I thought I'd ask and see if we could check into whether there's
The public access route is not available?
Well, the public access route is available, but the whole area to one side has been paved over.
Okay.
And I don't know where all that water is running
Yeah, okay.
from where it used to go there. Correspondence?
None?
None. You have a memo to the Planning Commission regarding the RDRC process?
I, yes, I provided that in case the vote for the RDRC, well, so that the new members would have an opportunity to know what the process is in case there was an interest on one of the new members' part to be Chair of that.
And I will encourage all of the new members to attend RDRC meetings every once in a while. I attended probably six or eight of them before I was appointed to be the Chair. It's, it's a fascinating learning experience going in there and seeing what goes on in those meetings, although it has changed considerably since a year ago with the update to the zoning ordinance. So, planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
Yes. The Transit Village is going to be the activity you'll be working on most of the summer, so the draft environmental impact report is before you. It was reviewed by a commission with no one seated here tonight. Was part of that review in February of 2010. So we are looking into, at your next meeting, doing a tutorial on the California Environmental Quality Act and what your role is in reviewing an environmental impact report. And the final environmental impact report should be released by them. The final is a document which takes responses to comments, verbal at the public hearing before the Planning Commission, and all written comments that were received during a public review period of, I think we extended it, it might have been a 90-day period, hundreds of them. So the final environmental impact report is actually about twice as thick as that one.
Lots, lots of, lots of reading.
We want to give you plenty of time. So, and to that point, we also want to gauge your availability to come rather than July 16th, so you have plenty of time to study up, your availability July 23rd. The city council is not meeting that night. They're taking a summer recess, and we'd like to put your meeting on the 23rd and cancel your normal meeting of the 16th, unless there's a conflict here.
I'm available.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm actually in St. Louis
Okay.
for medical reasons for both, both Mondays, the 16th and
Oh, the 16th and the 23rd, okay.
I'm sorry. This should be the last trip, though.
Or about the 30th.
Well, that could be a possibility. That's a fifth Monday. Nope. Oh, okay. That's a, a yes? 30th, okay? Okay.
I believe I'm all set for the 30th.
All right. We'll look at that.
Thank you.
There will be, you will be looking at it in one meeting. There'll be a second meeting, your second meeting in August. So we're planning two for sure. And we'll see how long that goes.
Do we need to still move the meeting, the 16th?
We'd like to. But yeah, keep that 16th, I'll run by that the 16th and 30th are available, and we'll see what the consultant team can do.
Okay. And if we need more than two meetings?
We'll have more?
We'll continue on with the plan. Okay. Thank you.
We haven't talked much lately about the successor agency. There is an oversight board that meets fairly often. Their last meeting was August 2nd, and at that meeting, I mean, their next meeting will be, and they will be considering if the successor agency disposes of the properties that the redevelopment agency owned and distributes the assets, or if the successor agency conveys the property agency conveys the property to the city. And that is a decision that will affect your agendas, because Wheeler Plaza would either go forward as a city project or not, depending on the outcome of that decision. Much of the, the consideration is the value of the property for distribution in the short term versus the value of the property and the long-term benefit to the taxing agency. So that's what the Oversight Board is talking about.
Would the successor agencies get revenue if Wheeler Plaza went forward?
Yes.
If the properties were not sold and it became part of the project?
Yes.
They would get...
In the long term, by the increased value of...
Versus a one-time short-term, short...
Yeah. It gets developed and, and goes on a tax roll as a 200 and, or 100 and something unit project with retail.
Okay.
And then I have a report on the city budget. The council will consider that June 25th, and there are a couple of things of interest. There's additional funding in the capital improvement program. You all looked at this, at your CIP conformity, but for the El Camino Landscape Project, which has been talked about for a number, number of years, it's oak to arroyo, street trees in the sidewalk, and new street lights, and we've added some money to that so that that can get done. And at the study session on the CIP, there was encouragement of that. Also, because of the, oh, the, the second one is the, on the west side of Industrial, north of Holly, as a result of In-N-Out Burger and some conversations between that developer and the neighborhood and the city, we had performed a landscape evaluation and are looking at 43 trees to be planted, and so we asked the council to consider funding that project. I'm sorry, it's probably not 43, I think it's $143,000, but a number of trees. And then the council will also look at, because of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, there were a number of, of issues regarding our housing programs and a housing fund we have. That all has been worked out, and there's a proposal to have a housing division, which stays in community development and to continue with our housing programs as we have had before.
And do the funds from the redevelopment agency that were earmarked for housing, do those roll into that housing department?
Yes. Yes. They do.
And that's it?
And that's it.
Okay. Is there anything else that anybody would like to say? Okay. Meeting adjourned.